Looks like we're ready to continue the meeting from our break. And we're going to move on to item 6.2, our 1030 item. Consideration of Acceptance of the December 31st, 2021 Report of Lake County Pool Investments. And Supervisor Sabatier, if you would like to go ahead and.
So I'm not going to take too long. I just want to summarize the fact that this is our, at least in my experience, not sure of Supervisor Scott's experience, but this is going to be the very first investment report that we have received, at least since 2019. And it's supposed to happen quarterly. We're also supposed to get an annual. This has been something that we've been working on when we had the Treasurer-Tax Collector Committee. Eventually, we did sign a contract with Chandler and Associates. Not sure if that's the right.
Asset management.
Asset management, thank you. It's been a pleasure working with Carlos to eventually change our policy and revise our policy. That's come through already. And today, we're going to be hearing about our first quarterly report and how things are going. And thank you very much for being here.
It's my pleasure to be here. Thank you for having me. I do want to update you on the investments. In addition to that, perhaps maybe first and foremost, I want to update you on some activity that we've been having in terms of, from an operational standpoint, getting our act together. I know the Treasurer-Tax Collector has been a part of that. Is she on?
Right behind you.
And Barbara, did you want to add any comments before we get started?
Oh, you're on mute.
I apologize. Yes, good morning. So I want to thank you, Carlos, for coming today to update us on the status of our investment program, our balances, balances, holdings, and yields. First, before we get started on the update, I would like to say that our team, you know, we are aware that we are behind in the interest apportionment for this last several months. And I would like to say, we do have a plan in place, a strong plan in place. We've had staff shortages that have been critical to our office in getting this done. But we have a plan in place to have this completed within the next two, two and a half weeks. We have a priority team that is working on this. And if for some reason that plan does not take place, there is a delay, unforeseen problem with that, we will be reaching out to the Auditor Controller and advising her immediately as to that plan. But again, I do appreciate Carlos's time today to come and spend time with us and update us on our plan. Thank you, Carlos.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So there's some materials in your packet that I don't know if you're displaying, that I'm going to reference a couple of them because I think they're helpful to have. But before I go into that, I want to reiterate what Supervisor Sabatier stated. There's been a lot of work that's happened with the committee. Supervisor Pyska, you've been a big part of that as well, as well as the Treasurer-Tax Collector and her team, and as well as Patrick Sullivan from the CAO and that office. So we've worked through and revised the investment policy. That was a big project. Everybody had a hand in that. We conducted a statistical cash flow analysis to have a target of how much our core assets versus liquid assets. That was a big spreadsheet job. We did a benchmark study with the committee to determine a strategy that would be appropriate for moving the investments forward. And since that time, we began investing in November. So we have two full months under our belt, at least through the end of the calendar year. I'm going to talk a little bit about that today with what we have. I can tell you that there's been quite a bit of progress in terms of diversifying the portfolio from a sector standpoint, from an issuer standpoint, and most importantly, from a maturity standpoint. So all of this has been done with a plan in place. We didn't do any of this, we didn't get here randomly. And it's been a lot of work with the various components. It's been a very collaborative approach. If you're looking at your packet, I don't know what your packet numbers are, but I have some page numbers of my own on there. If we just roll forward.
Is it possible to share the packet on Zoom so that the public on Zoom and also those in the chamber can at least maybe see it? It might be difficult here.
Mary Matthew?
Can Matthew share it?
Finding it now.
Sorry for the interruption.
No, no, no problem at all.
That way we can all follow.
Yeah.
Maybe while that's happening or while that's getting set up, I can give you a little bit of background. So we're now, there's a few pages here. There's two, three pages that explain the economics of what we're dealing with, which I think are important to understand. The county is really limited in the types of investments that it can have. You're limited by California government code to high credit quality, liquid and safe, short-term investments, five years or less. And so that's a very finite world. Essentially, you're buying bonds and you're collecting interest from these bonds. And the two ways to make money off of these bonds is, and remember, a bond is a loan, you're lending money and you're collecting interest. So the two ways to make return on these bonds to get money is, the higher the interest that's available that you can purchase in the market, the better, because that's interest income that comes into your coffers. And then, of course, the value of the principal itself can go up and down. We track all of those components. Generally, for the pool, though, what you really focus on is what we call the yield, which is just your interest income. And so the interest component is very important. So the reason I'm telling you all of this is because actually, if we, it looks like we're on the economic update, if we just roll forward two pages, there's a couple of charts there on inflation. So right now, you've probably heard in the news that prices are going up, and prices are going up for a number of reasons. But inflationary pressures tend, and those are two measures you're looking at on the sheet, on the page. On the left is the Consumer Price Index, which is often used to negotiate contracts and things like that. And the chart on the right-hand side is the Personal Consumption Expenditures, which is another measure of inflation that the Federal Reserve prefers to look at. But inflationary pressures, that rise in prices is pushing interest rates that are available in the market up. And if you can actually see that, if we go to the next page after that one. So those higher yields means two things. It means that as we get more money coming into the portfolio and into the investment program, you're able to pick up higher yields. The chart on the left-hand side shows you the yield history for a two-year Treasury, a five-year Treasury, and a 10-year Treasury. You don't invest at a 10-year range, but we're showing you that as an example of what things look like on the longer end. But indeed, if you just look at the two-year line, which is the very bottom one on the left-hand chart, you can see that there's been a run-up during the bottom of the interest rate cycle during that COVID summer, when things shut down, interest rates fell dramatically. And the yield for that investment fell as low as what we call 12 basis points. For the rest of the world, that's 0.12%. That's as low as you got. You invested your money for two years, you're going to be collecting interest income to the equivalent of 0.12% per year for the next two years. So it's very low, it's a historic low. So this is the kind of low-rate environment that we're in. Now, you can see that if you move on the left-hand chart towards the right-hand side of that left-hand chart, rates have come up, and that's because of inflationary pressures. So we now have higher interest available to us to purchase in the market, and how quickly we purchase it is a function of how much assets we have liquid in the program and how quickly we can move on new investments, again, diversifying the portfolio. Right now, to give you an idea, that two-year Treasury that hit 0.12% as of this morning is at 1.31%. So it's been quite a bit of a run-up. So all this to say is that if we go forward two pages, I just want to remind everybody, the goals are mandated by California code, and those are safety followed by liquidity, then followed by return. It means that you need to have your money invested in safe investments that are where you're going to get your money back. The second is that you need to have the money available when you need it to make payments to participants in the pool, for county expenditures or what have you. And then after you do those, then we start looking for return. And return, as I mentioned, is interest income. And of course, we always look to increase or protect the fair value appreciation of the principal in the portfolio. Right now, because of the dynamic I just showed you here in these pages, interest income is going to go up, which is very good news. You're going to see, you'll be able to budget higher interest income, and that's a net positive to the county. The value of the investments, however, when interest rates go up in the bond markets, the values fall. The opposite happens. It's an inverse relationship, and I'm happy to go offline on the math behind that. But that's what happens. And as a result, as rates rise, when we buy an investment, that investment will fall in value on paper. That value doesn't matter as much, although we do track it and manage to protect it. It doesn't impact your earnings because you pay out on the interest income. The pool pays out apportionment on the interest income component, and we're trying to increase that. And that's what has to, rates have to rise from those lows of 0.12. We have to have higher rates to be able to pay something because rates have been painfully low. If we go to the next page, the next two pages are simply a summary of your investment policy. As we stated, this program is subject to California government code, and we have to follow the law. And this is one of the ways that we demonstrate that the investments follow the law. Our team looks at the holdings on a, every day, and they also, any trade that's done gets put through a filter that's basically your investment policy and California code. And if the trade violates any of those, the trade gets kicked out, the portfolio manager can't even execute that trade. But all this to say is, we have a compliance team that's independent of the investment team. They do a review, and then they publish a statement letting you know that we are in compliance with the law. And then if we go to the next page after that, this is an important spot. So this is your entire investment program on a consolidated basis. If you look at the right-hand column, it was valued at $296 million back in September. Obviously, since September, you've done tax collections. There's been quite a bit of tax collections in a run-up to December 10th. So then you can see in the column to the left-hand, or the middle column right there, is as of December. So you can see that the program grew from $296 million to $425 million. A good component of that will go out, and it'll be property taxes that get passed through for various expenditures. So it will decrease, and then you'll see a run-up again that's similar in April, maybe not as high, but similar. Now, of this 425 million, we are currently managing about 68%, 70% of that on your behalf. The remainder is currently at the state pool, a combination of the state pool, local agency investment fund, better known as LEAF, that's the state pool. And it's also, the other components are the bank in cash. They're sitting in cash deposits that are very liquid and ready to be used for whatever needs you have. Notice the yield, the maturity on a, that's the, that's that middle row, the average purchase yield. Three months ago, it was 11 basis points, 0.11%. As of December, it's 0.39. And again, this is a blending. When you look at the investment portfolio of securities, the component that we're managing, that component is yielding 52 basis points. So we're already over half a percent, and we're climbing. We're headed in the right direction. That's all a positive for the county. AA, average credit quality, it's very high credit quality, the safety comes first, that's very important. When we average, when we look at the duration of the portfolio, the duration is a similar measure to the weighted average maturity of the portfolio. Duration is, it's an important risk measure for us. But when you look at the duration of the consolidated investment program, including the components that we don't manage on your behalf, those that are sitting in the investment pools, the state pool, we average, we look like a one-year portfolio. Now, we have an internal target for the portfolio of securities, that part that makes up 68% of the investment. We have an internal target of moving that towards 1.8 years. We have a target to move it there and keep it there over the long run. That was part of that strategy work that Supervisor Pyska and Supervisor Sabatier and the Treasurer-Tax Collector and Patrick Sullivan worked, and your CAO as well was part of that, worked with us to set, based on metrics and a study that we did. So we're on our way there. When we look at the investment portfolio of securities alone, we're at 1.48 years. So we're not quite at, we're not at 1.8. We're on our way there. So it just means we're not finished investing in the portfolio. We're dollar-cost averaging our way into this market because we know that rates are on the rise. The last thing I want to do is put all your money out in longer securities and have interest rates continue to rise, and we miss at least a portion of that rise in rates. So this is why we do baby steps, little by little. The portfolio, if you turn to the next page, you'll have two pie charts. The chart on the left-hand side is what, well, on the right is what it looked like back in September, and on the left is what it looks like today. You can see that back in September, you had almost half of the portfolio in a money-market mutual fund, which is a very safe and liquid investment, but very low yielding. And you can see that we've rebalanced out of that into debt securities that are allowed by California code. You're getting more diversified. That's what this chart tells you. You're holding more assets that are allowed by code. When we purchase these assets, we're doing credit work on these assets. So we're not just buying things randomly. We're buying them because we believe that they're appropriate to hold by the county, and there's been quite a bit of analysis and credit work to make sure that we have high-credit-quality securities that you're going to get your money back at maturity. That's a key component, and that diversification will continue. As I mentioned, we're not done yet. We still have about 3.6 in the money-market fund. We may reduce that down to less than 1%. The cash position is 14%. That's going to get reduced, and this is on a consolidated basis. That cash position may waver depending on the inflows and outflows of the portfolio. As I stated, this is on a consolidated basis. This is everything you own, not just the portfolio of securities. And if you go to the next page, and I'll end with this one, I want you to see the term structure. This is the maturity distribution of the portfolio. When we were looking at this back in September, 100% of the portfolio was 90 days or less. So you weren't reaching out to longer maturities to pick up higher yield. And we've been working with the committee to push that out. So you can see where we were. The green bars represent where the portfolio maturity structure was as of December 31st. And you see that you have the bulk of the investments between one and three years, but a little bit between, or beyond three years, about 6% in the three-to-four-year range, nothing in the five-year range. In the one-to-two-year range, you've got about 15% of the portfolio. And again, we're not done here. We're still investing cash that's available and pushing it out longer. We're going to do that little by little, we'll be very deliberate about it, keeping safety in mind, keeping diversification in mind, and then pushing for that higher yield. Going forward, the dynamic that we're seeing in the market will continue. We believe that the Federal Reserve will raise the overnight lending rate between banks, better known as a federal funds target rate. They think they're going to raise it about three times this year, is what they're stating. It may be more, but three is probably a good thing to aim for. It just means that short-term rates are going to be higher for some period, which is an opportunity for the county. We're going to look at that. But do remember, as rates rise, the value on paper falls. And indeed, your Auditor Controller at fiscal year-end will take all the interest income you collected for the year in your financial statement, and she will adjust it for that change in fair value on paper. It's an accounting adjustment for your purposes, but we do track it and manage it. Let me stop there and take any questions that you may have. And before any questions, I apologize. The rest of the presentation has the actual holdings, all your holdings by name, maturity, credit quality, amounts, par values, market values, yield on a security-by-security basis. You also have all the transactions over the last three months. Code requires that we present transactions to you on a regular basis, at least monthly, at least divided on a monthly basis. So those are two key components of this. You have everything you own on this document right there. But I apologize. Let me take any questions you may have.
Who was Sabatier?
I really don't have any questions. I think that the document that you've prepared for us, and of course, I've had privilege to have conversations with you, which helps me to better understand everything I'm looking at, because this is a very, it's very complex to dive into. This is not a normal bank account situation. But the fact that, what I love about the bottom part with all the holdings is, it's a way to check. What are the rules of the policy? Only a certain percentage are allowed for this? You can look it up. You have LEAF, what's the percentage? Oh, it matches, we didn't exceed that. So I think it makes it very transparent as to what our policy is and what we're actually doing. And so I appreciate the changes, the diversification. I'm just going to bring it back up here real quick. The diversification difference, to me, is one of the most major parts. I also believe that we are investing a whole lot more than we were before. I think we were minimal on what it was that we were investing in. Granted, what we were investing in was safe. It was a very short-term yield. But having that diversity is very important to making sure that if one thing happens, that it doesn't actually hurt the one place that we've invested in. So I really appreciate the changes that have occurred. I do have a question, but I think I'm going to wait for public comment and other comments from the board members, just to kind of see how we can, how we move forward in the future.
Are you sure, Scott?
I don't have any questions. Just want to share my appreciation for the work that's been done to make sure that we are managing our money appropriately and that we are, you know, investing and to make sure that we are making money in return. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
And as an added comment that hasn't been made today, our investment pool is not just the county. It's our fire districts, it's our school districts, and so they are, they're very dependent on what our investment strategy is to make sure that they get something out of it. They need to make sure the return is there on their investment in our investment pool. So when we're talking about interest and money coming back into our coffers, that eventually gets split off into the taxing agencies that have their part in this as well. So that's when it becomes much more important than just us, with the big C for county, it's really about the little c, county. Everybody that's involved in this is benefiting from this better way of investing and this more diverse and safe way of investing.
All right. I'll open up for public comment. I'm not seeing anybody on Zoom right now, but I seen someone had their hand up in the back. So if you'd like to come up and state your name for the record and.
Good morning. My name is Michael Wegner, and I just had a couple of quick questions that, for me, I'm just trying to bring everything into making sense for us. Because you guys have a lot of money stored altogether here, and, you know, the markets being how they are currently, they're very, it seems volatile, right? And so I'm just trying to take into account kind of the strategy that I'm seeing laid out here and my understanding and my strategy so I can better understand and also maybe answer some questions. So if you could bring up that last slide that you had showing the diversification of your funds? Yeah, yeah. So obviously, where we started and where you are now, you can, it's a bunch more colors, so you're a lot more diverse. But it would seem like you're super deep into the U.S. Treasury bonds, right? And the U.S. Treasury bonds in relation to inflation, seems like there may be an issue there. I'm just wondering if maybe, I'm sorry, I didn't catch his name.
Carlos. Sorry, I don't remember your last name.
I'm sorry, Carlos. Could you help me understand, given where we see inflation going, why you're so deep into the U.S. Treasury bonds, which seem like there's going to be some kind of adverse effect because of inflation, which is growing, right, which we know? Could you maybe just elaborate on that for us?
Is that your only question?
That is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So as I stated earlier, California government code severely restricts the types of investments that you're allowed to have. You can't have stocks, you can't have real estate, you can't have private equity or commodities, you can't have currencies, you can't do any of that. You can only buy bonds, all bonds, not just Treasury bonds. The gentleman is correct. Inflationary pressures devalue investments, as I showed you with the prior charts. It causes rising rates, devalues your existing investment, and that value is simply happening on paper. As long as you are able to hold it to maturity, you get your principal back, is what happens. But on paper, the value can fluctuate, and as rates are rising, that is occurring. Now, the key component about this is that Treasuries are considered the safest investment right now generally on the planet. And so Treasuries, followed by federal agency securities, make up a very important cornerstone of your investment program. Now, if Treasuries are being impacted by inflation, other securities that are not as gold standard as Treasuries, such as corporate securities and asset-backed securities and all the other types, all the other colors you see there, if the Treasuries are impacted negatively by rising rates, at least the values on paper, the others are impacted even more. But the others also pay you higher yield. No worries.
Not for you.
No worries. So it's a function. Why does the portfolio look like this? It's because we have a very limited universe of investments in which we can invest, and within that universe, we're going to look for safety, and that's what the Treasuries offer to us. And we're going to look for liquidity, and all of these securities are very liquid, they have robust secondary markets, if we needed to sell and get cash. And then we're going to look for, obviously, return after that. And all of these sectors, we're getting a risk-adjusted return when we buy a riskier asset than a Treasury, because the Treasury is the safest on there. If we're buying a riskier asset, we're looking to make sure that it's high-credit quality, that we're going to get our money back, that we're going to get your money back, and also that for the additional risk that we're taking on, we're going to get paid for it. That's how we do our analysis. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, I thank you for that explanation as well, because you explained the limitations. And I'm not sure if you were here during public comment, but at times, people think that, you know, we're tied to different votes or whatever the case may be. But because you've explained that, you know, there's limitations, and that's why we're invested into Treasury and things of that nature, rather than, you know, different entities that promote whatever, you know, accusations are when it comes to like vaccinations or things like that. So thank you for explaining that. Is there anyone for public comment that has anything to ask? I don't see one in the chambers, and I don't see one online, so I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, I had a question for Ms. Ringan. She had mentioned something about the interest deposits or the interest payments, and I would suspect that that means the interest payments to our school districts, our fire districts, and also the county itself. Was wondering if you could let us know, what quarters are we looking at that still need to be reimbursed or dispersed, or whatever the correct term is?
Sure. So I believe we still have to complete fourth quarter of last year and then first two quarters of this year. So we will be moving forward on that as quickly as possible. Due to staffing and also the transition from our former advisor to Chandler Asset and the difference of the reporting, that has caused a little bit of delay. So but at this point, we will, it's a priority, and we will be moving on that, and like I say, we'll have that completed. Two, two and a half weeks is our plan, and if for some reason there's something unforeseen that comes up, we will definitely notify the Auditor Controller as soon as possible.
Okay. And we're talking again, just because I didn't hear you, I don't know if the microphone dimmed out, but the fourth quarter of 2021, the first and second quarter of 2122?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll be closing the second quarter shortly.
Okay. Is there a way to automate this process? Because I'm suspecting that we get a lump sum when it comes to the interest that we receive, and that then it needs to be split, or how does that work? I'm just trying to figure out, how can we help to make sure that we're more timely? Because this has been an ongoing issue to be able to be timely.
Well, the, our interest is received as, not on a regular basis, but as an investment matures or as it's paid out. So that has to be done on a as-is basis, as a cash basis. And once we do the deposit, mainly it is due to staffing, I have to stop today. This staffing, that situation we've had for many years now, especially this last year with vacancies and approved leave of absences. But I do believe going forward, with the reports from Chandler and our current staffing, I think we will be able to move forward, our current dedication to the staffing. So I don't believe there'll be an issue going forward. I think we'll keep on top of that going forward.
Okay. You want to add something to that?
Oh, no, you know, the only observation is, the county records its investment income on a cash basis, not on an accrual basis. So you wait for the interest payment to actually come into the portfolio, and when it comes in, that's when the county records as earned, and that's the basis for your apportionment. Obviously, those payments, because bonds pay in a random schedule, just depends on where they were issued, when the original issuer went to the market to borrow money, is what it is. So it can be random. So in terms of automation, that makes it a little bit difficult. But, you know, we spent, you know, in addition to the work that we've done with the committee, the Treasurer-Tax Collector's team and I spent actually quite a bit of time, indeed yesterday, about three and a half hours, going through a number of accounting issues to try and see where we can make it easier, where there are better or faster information sources. So, you know, a lot of eyes on this, is what I'm trying to say. So we're, you know, we're looking at it to see if we can make it a little faster. As your investment advisor, we don't book any of this, that's, it's not our purview, it's not part of our charter. But we do provide all the statements that generate, that indicate or show what has been earned on the investments that we manage, and even on those that we report on. So the data is now there, and it's now consolidated, and it's easier to get. So you may, that may help you in the long run.
Okay. Appreciate that. And I'm going to ask that, I'd like to get a check-in to make sure that that has been accomplished in the next two and a half weeks. The fourth quarter was over on June 30th, and I'm sure that our schools and our fire districts, including ourselves, while it's not exactly a 50% of our budget or anything like that, that all money is money, and money is important to make sure that we are. is important to make sure that we are providing all of the services. I mean, right now, we're talking about soon, later this afternoon, or possibly this morning, about our mid-year budget review and having all those interest amounts deposited could really provide us a tool to say, where can we place that, those funds for added services to our communities? So I'd like to get a check-in in the next three weeks and just to make sure that we are moving forward with that. And hopefully that is the case.
Okay, thanks. I would like to just add one thing. Although the quarter ends on June 30th, we don't actually close the interest until the 15th of the month following. So on July 15th or thereabout, once we have our LAIF interest post, that's when we actually close the quarter for the, for the interest for that previous quarter.
Yep, no, that is expected, yes. That's it for me, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Carlos. If there are any other questions, we appreciate your work on this.
Supervisor, it's a delight to work with you guys. Thank you so much and we'll see you next quarter. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think there's a motion to accept the report, right? If there's anyone that wants to make that action.
One of the committee members?
Is it?
I move to accept the December 31st, 2021 report of Lake County pooled investments.
Second.
So a motion in a second. Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.